Oh, okay, great. Thank you all. Welcome, everybody. Thank you. And thank you for joining tonight's episode of the Traverse. Rights and Democracies Monthly Rights and Democracy Institute's monthly conversation series, where we explore the ideas and issues that make up our movement with people who are putting them into action. I am your host Mia Schultz, and I am the Catalyst Leadership Coordinator for Rights and Democracy Institute. And today we are going to be talking about school boards. For nearly 100 years, school boards have been an integral feature of public education in the United States. They have played a key role in bringing community voices into the education sphere, as well as offering an opportunity to apply community knowledge of local resources and needs to school governance. More recently, however, school boards have become the proving grounds for national, social, and political debates, from attacking school masking policies to attempting to censor teaching about the history of race in America. Outside interests have begun waging culture wars that are transforming school boards, school board meetings into sites of division and disruption. One of the ways that we can work towards worked to keeping school boards resilient and centered on meeting the needs of students and their communities is to increase public knowledge and awareness about school boards and what they do, in turn, attracting a diversity of community stakeholders who are interested in serving, interested in serving. So tonight, we wanted to give you a glimpse into school board life and lay the foundation for understanding the nuts and bolts of how they work. So with that, I'm so very pleased to introduce our guests for this evening. I am joined by Amanda Lucia Garcis, who works with the Vermont Human Rights Commission and was a founding member of the Vermont Coalition for Ethnic and Social Equity in Schools. She serves on the Montpelier Roxbury School District Board and is a member of the Policy and Equity Committees. Welcome, Amanda. We also have Kevin Coach Christie, who is a longtime advocate for education justice. Among other vocations, Coach has worked as an adjunct professor, teacher, coach, principal, therapeutic case manager, and executive director. He's currently the Chair of the Vermont Human Rights Commission, and he's the Chair of the Hartford School Board and a member of the Pre-K to 16 Council and Justice for Children Task Force. We're so glad to have you here, Coach. And Elizabeth Burrows is serving her eighth year on her local school board, fifth as a merged school board member, and sixth as a board chair. She has also served for six years on the Executive Committee of the Supervisory Union Board and has led efforts to implement implicit bias training in schools and continues to advocate for equity in education. Thank you so much for joining us, Elizabeth. And last but not least, I'm so pleased to introduce Essex High School Senior, Irish Young. Iris is a student representative on the Essex Westford School District Board. They are, they are working to build infrastructure within the district to bring more student voices to decision-making spaces and encourage leadership at a young age. Iris has worked with, with the community to combat racism and make, make the school system more equitable. Iris's statements do not represent the views of the EWSD Board. Welcome, Iris. So, welcome again. Thank you all for joining me today. Let's get right into the questions. I looked so much, I've been looking so much forward to this conversation. Let's start with you, Elizabeth. Can you, can you start off with the basics? Can you tell us about the functions of a school board and what are the main responsibilities?
Uh, okay. It's main outer function is we are members who are elected by taxpayers to represent them in matters pertaining to how the schools are run. We're also asked to represent the school system to taxpayers. And so we kind of walk a line straight through the middle there. Let's see, I wrote a couple of things down. We, we, we're mainly concerned with policy, budgeting. We usually are, local boards often serve on SU Board member, SU Boards, Supervisory Union Boards. And we, we serve in a quasi judicial function, which means that we sort of adjudicate different matters as a, there's a protocol for problems as they arise. And if they make it all the way up to us, then we, we help to try to resolve them. Did I leave anything out, guys?
I would add that boards have one important piece is to set the vision for the district too.
Yeah.
That, you know, then gets the, the policy gets to move this vision forward.
That, yes, that's really important. I can't believe I left that out. I'm sorry.
No, that's why we're all here together.
Yes. I would love to hear some examples, Amanda, in your school district on how this function like works in real time and real life.
So I want to start by saying also that my statements do not represent those of the Montpelier Roxbury School District. I'm here as an individual, but sharing my experiences as a board member. So just to be clear about that. So, I, so I think the vision is really important because I see it as like how community gets involved in this process. Normally, we see school board members as, I always think about power dynamics, right? Like you get elected and now you are in this seat. But the reality is that we are accountable to this community that we're part of. And I think the way that some, in our experience, for example, right now, we're engaging into asking community, what are the values that we want to see in our district? What, you know? And how do we set that to be the, the vision? I think it's really important because we're getting the feedback to create a, a, a community vision that is rooted into the, the values of that community that we're part of. I'm lucky to live in Montpelier and to have Roxbury part of, that it's like a community that's very close knit and that has a lot of values around support systems and whatnot. But then the, the hard part, I think, is the, the next piece, which is the policy. How do you make and create policies that really are aligned with those value systems that the community has?
That's great. You know, I actually had a conversation with Coach today and how he's been in this school district for, for a while. And he said over time, he's been able to increase community involvement. Coach, can you explain more about that?
It's probably one of the most difficult things that any of us have to do in any of our work is let's use the term community engagement. And over the last five years or so, we've been really trying to figure out how do we get more people, you know, involved? I mean, without just creating controversy, you know, because I mean, you know, people will get involved when there's something controversial. But we, we want to get people involved in what we do, which is looking at, you know, that 35,000 foot view of what we want our district to look like and what we want our student to look like when he or she finishes going through our school. You know, that's that ultimate goal. And you can't, you can't really get there without that interaction. So, you know, over time, we've been going, you know, we tried going, having our meetings at different schools, using the PTAs and PTOs, you know, to kind of say, okay, we're going to meet in the elementary school this week. And, you know, thinking that it's going to draw more people, same three people show up now. But it, it, it's not that, that interesting in a lot of ways. So what we did was we kind of flipped the paradigm upside down. We have been able to get our business work done fairly efficiently. So what that does is it actually leaves time for imagineering. And when I use that term imagineering, it's having fun things we can do with the community. So our second meeting of the month is our community engagement meeting. At our last community engagement meeting on the 22nd, we invited Dr. Mary Gannon then to actually do a diversity and equity training for the board, but we extended invitations to the select board, the administration of the town, and the community at large. That was that activity, you know, for this month, you know, next, you know, the, this coming month, we're going to be, because we're going into budget cycle, we're going to actually bring in some topics around, why would you make a decision about bonding versus capital improvement? And how does that actually work? You know, and, and, and sort of having some fun, you know, with it, but yet at the same time showing how important it is to the community because that affects the tax rate and it affects the quality of education as well. You know, so there's those pieces and, and, you know, you just try to keep working on trying to get people to come and listen and pay attention.
I think that's a perfect segue into talking about, you know, like our roles and the functions that, that are on. And Iris, I know that you have a unique role on a school board. I'd love to hear more about that and, and what's involved with your role.
Yeah. So I'm a student representative on the school board, which means that I actually wasn't elected, but I was appointed. And it also means that I don't get a vote. So that's, that's something that's interesting there. And sort of changes the way my role functions. But the other student representative and I are tasked with bringing student voice to the decisions of the board. And that's a really, really important position and a really important function because there, there's students have a lot to say. And in the end, I think that we are more accountable to the students and to providing them an education than we are to the taxpayers. That's my opinion. But I, I think that what we're trying to do as a school board is to make sure we are making a better education for students and providing them a better experience and learning environment to thrive and support our community. So I take that role really seriously. And the other student representative and I are working to sort of build out networks across the schools in our district to make sure that we're getting voice from all of them because we're both high school students. So we want to make sure that middle school students also have the ability to impact their own education and impact the ways that they, they interact with the, these school buildings that they come into five days a week. Yeah.
That is really so impressive and thank you. And thank you for that. That is an important role, as you said, and a lot of way to carry at your, at your age, honestly and frankly. But speaking still of roles, we have two chairs here in, in our midst, I think, Elizabeth and Coach. Can you tell me about those, those functions and the roles as Chair?
Elizabeth, why don't you go first? Ladies first.
I was going to ask you to go first. The Chair does mundane things like setting the agenda for the meeting, for various meetings, running the meetings, helping to find new people when, when somebody leaves the board, keeping in contact with the superintendent and the, any subcommittee members, but also the school board chair is kind of the spoke, spokesperson for the, for the school board. And sometimes in, has to speak on matters that don't necessarily, that aren't necessarily directly related. The school board chair fields questions and comments from community members and has a, has a close relationship with the superintendent and also talks to other school board members about their individual concerns. And they kind of lead the board in trying to set, you know, trying to work collaboratively on setting goals, both short term and long term. And as Amanda said, kind of leading a vision process or vision development process, I guess. Because there isn't a vision process. And kind of taking in information from all and, and thoughts from, from all different angles and synthesizing it. And I know I left something out. I left something big out last time. What did I leave out this time?
Well, it isn't a question. I think so much is leaving, you know, things, things out. I, as you probably noticed, I like metaphors. And so the one that, you know, I'd like to, to share with this is, you know, I look at as the chair's role, you know, as the navigator. Okay, not necessarily the captain or the steerer of the ship, you know, because, you know, we've got a superintendent. We pay big money to, you know, drive that thing. Okay, our job is to help him get to where he needs to go. And that's what a navigator does. And in, in that mindset, you get to do all of the things that Elizabeth talked about, you know, within that role. And, and hopefully that makes sense to folks. You know, talking with all of the sailors, people at different ports, you know, I mean, it's.
The map. You're the map, right? Maybe?
You got it. You got it.
Nice.
Go ahead.
I was going to ask Amanda, you know, she's on, we mentioned that you're on the policy and the equity committees. And you know, what additional responsibilities come with being on those committees and, and, and how does that work? Could you expand on that?
Yeah, I think every board has different committees that kind of function. So currently, our role, so we created the Equity Committee this year and is our, our, our school board has passed equity policy in 2019, I think, or 2020. And so we are kind of looking at how we are actually doing that policy in actuality. So we are currently doing a policy equity framework, a tool for which we can look at all of our policies and see if they're aligned with our values and our, the equity policy that we passed. And it's going to be serving as a tool also for the creation of new policies moving forward. So we need twice, twice a month for each of the committees for about an hour and a half. Then we do like work and then we come back and, and that's basically what we do. So our role is, again, is just like a facilitation process to look more deeply into something, then bring it to the full board and then additional bring it to the community. So the Equity Committee is fairly new, only started a couple of months ago. And then the Policy Committee is, yeah, just like revising and looking at policies and make sure they're being updated when needed. So it's exciting. But I just want to add that the chair has a lot of power. I think we need to talk about power dynamics about chairs because they do, I mean, it could go either way. We could have a list of coaches, but we could also have other people that are kind of barriers to, for the work moving forward. So I think when we have, when we talk of any of these roles, there are power dynamics within school boards that it's important to think about when we're specifically talking about roles.
Oh, yeah. Very good point. Very good point. And, um, you know, I just want to take a moment to go back just a second just because, you know, one of the reasons I wanted to have this panel here on Traverse was to demonstrate, you know, kind of that we can all kind of serve in this capacity. And I'd just love to hear your personal stories and kind of how and why you, you decided to, to run for school board and be on the school board and, and what motivated you and, and, and that sort of thing. Just, just to personalize it a little bit. And then we get back to power because that's an interesting subject too. Whoever wants to start, I'm going to leave it out there.
I can start.
Okay.
Um, I am on our school, where I started on our, we started as a three-person board of a very small school. And I was, more or less, I was at town meeting with my baby at the time, who we were way up in the back and had him on a blanket. We, so that we, we wouldn't bother anybody. We had a blanket behind us and we were sort of, there was nobody else up there in the balcony. And I was called out from the floor downstairs, asked if I wanted to be a board member because we, we've always had, yeah, that's how I got on the board. And I don't think people even saw who I was, actually, but we've, we always had trouble finding board members, actually. And so I came on the board and within of our three board members, within six weeks, our chair resigned. And when, within another six weeks, the next chair resigned. So I had to really learn how to swim quickly. And I attended all kinds of other, other districts meetings so that I could understand how a budget process worked. And I, it also was the beginning of Act 46 and I, I attended all kinds of other, other SU Supervisor Union, Act 46 meetings so that I could understand what that was all about. And then what came out of that was that our district merged with the district next door, Windsor. And I took quite a bit of heat for that. But now we have a merged district. And I think, I think through that, I think we were in our fifth year and we're happier now. We, we, we had to make a lot of, you know, compromises, big, big compromises in the process that were hard, really hard work. But I wouldn't go back there for all the money in the entire world.
It seems like you were motivated to stay on and make change, you know? I, I really admire that.
Yeah, I, I felt like I, you know, also because we had this kind of turnover and I didn't want to do that to somebody else. So, so I wanted to stay until we, we got it through. And then, yeah, I, I, as an SU Board member, which Supervisor Union Board member, I also, we, we have several districts in our Supervisory Union. And so I also serve on the Executive Committee of the Supervisory Union Board. And that's really actually pretty gratifying too, because you have the big picture of being on the board. And then you have the bigger picture of being on the, the Supervisory Union Board. And we've been able to do things like get all of our policies moved up to that level so that all of the districts have the same uniform policies. And we've been able to have an SU-wide, you know, what Amanda was talking about, the, the community conversation about where we're headed in the next five, 10, and 20 years. And we can bring, we have much more success bringing all of the communities together for that than than getting people to attend our, our little board meetings. But we, I, I find it to be really the best kind of challenge. Yeah, I really, I find it really gratifying and and it's, you know, it's the noblest of causes. So everybody's working towards something that, that is like, it's for the betterment of society. It's for the betterment of our, our kids. It's for, you know, there is no, there's no downside to what you're doing. So anyway, like stepped down off my high horse. Sorry.
Iris, I haven't heard much from you and I, I'd love to hear your kind of like origin story, why you accepted this appointment to the school board.
Yeah. Um, I mean, so I, I applied for it because I had seen my, one of my predecessors and colleague last year, Tilly Krishna, who was on the school board before me, doing amazing work in the community and using her role to sort of bring student voice to our school board and make changes. And I was really inspired by that and wanted to sort of help utilize that position to make more change. And so that's why I got on the board and then I was hit immediately with our fight to raise the Black Lives Matter flag in like one of my first meetings. And so that came in quick and sort of became a thing that monopolized our work for a really long time and became something that we got a lot of crazy public comments about for the next months to come. And then, I mean, some of the other work that I, that I've done that I think is really impactful is the work on our equity policy, which we passed recently. And we went through a bunch of different iterations of it and we developed it and we redeveloped it. And we used a BIPOC affinity space to make sure that it was in line with what needed to happen. And in the end, I'm, I'm really proud of it. And I, I think that that was a really great step for our school district. It was also still really controversial and came with a lot of blowback from different members of our community. And so, yeah, I mean, that, that's been a big part of the work. And I think that in the beginning of my work on the school board, it was pretty, pretty consensus-based and not very contentious. And, and I'm sort of like hearing others' experiences and sort of missing that because there was this sort of broad agreement about where we wanted to go. And we were just trying to figure out the nuts and bolts of the policies that we needed to get there. But now that things have become more controversial, everything's sort of a fight. And it's, it's a lot harder when things are about a fight because, because in the end, we all should be working towards making our, our students' education better and making sure we're giving our students all the opportunities and tools that they need to succeed. So, I mean, that, I think that the way that I got on the school board might be more unique to most, the majority of members, though, I mean, if there is any students, I think that that's a really great way to bring student voice to decisions and sort of make real changes. But while, while the way I got on is unique, like the, the nitty-gritty work of the policies that we need to pass and like our transition over into policy governance and the ways that that sort of affects the work and the ways we can impact students' education is, is something that is more widespread across school boards. And I, I don't know, I think that it's just such important work that needs to happen. And I think that maybe some people see it as like inherently non-political and there are people who are politicizing it, but I, I sort of think that it is a political thing because our school systems for so long have been these things that uphold like systems of oppression. And in order to dismantle them, it's going to take some political action. So I, yeah, that's, that's the, my origin story of my school board membership.
And so well stated. And I'm just so excited about our future, just hearing you, right? Amanda, Coach, let's hear what, how you guys started. I'd love to hear, hear how that, how you were, how you were compelled to be in this role.
Do you want to go or you want me to go?
You go ahead, Amanda.
You know, I, I, I never wanted to be on the school board and then one day I got the itch that maybe I should be on the school board. And I think, you know, as, as part of the, part of a bigger strategy of how we make change, right? So like when my daughter started kindergarten, I became really active. Part of a bigger strategy of how we make change, right? So like when my daughter started kindergarten, um I became really active. Um, as as you know, I was part of the founding members of the Vermont Coalition for Ethnic and Social Equity in Schools and we were doing. Now it's called the Education Justice Coalition of Vermont and we were doing a lot of education work and then when my daughter entered Kinder. I basically went in uh to support. Um, the principal, he invited me to be part of the side council. I told him I was too loud, he didn't want me there and he said, yes, we want your voice, I said, are you sure? And he said, yeah, so I got there and then I became really involved um with the parents group which um. And created uh an equity committee just to make sure that things were aligned. And uh soon thereafter, a t- a a group of us kind of. Started re-envisioning what parents group might look like and so we created, we made it into a collective. Uh, which is what we're doing this year, just experimenting about how to involve more people. Um, the further than the traditional kind of PTA, we're trying to do more community and more uh inclusivity. And then um there was a campaign to remove the SRO out of them of their school district. Um, which I was very involved with in uh getting it to happen and then. Got kind of more entrenched with the conversations with the board. And at that time, there was a a seat that opened up, one of our great school board member uh had to resign. And I was like, oh, maybe I should and because it was like a, it was, i- it's so it was an appointment, you had to apply. And then they go in in front of the board. Um, I said, okay, uh, you know, I'll I'll do it because it was like a five month and then you had to like run for reelection in March. And then I did it and then I I I and so that's kinda how it ended up, it was. It was something that it was like more a. A collective decision as to like what role I could be playing because I was doing all these other things in the district as well. And really be involved with the parents group and um. And just like more uh with a collective of community members that really do believe in equity. In our school district, so that's kinda how I ended up there.
I love it. It's a journey from community organizing to actually elected official, it's amazing. Coach, has you been doing like since what, two thousand seven?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Let's hear your story.
Well, I I'd always been kind of interested in the board side. Um, you know, as uh our kids went through school, you know, we were involved in, you know, the teen center. We put clubs together and Girl Scouts and. You know, PTO and, you know, parent advisory groups and things of that sort. But being that I was directly in education, uh I felt that. I didn't want to get fully involved on the school board side till after uh the girls graduated. Because I I didn't want any question. About what my motives were. Uh, you know, once, you know, I made that decision to go, you know, onto the board. Um, because, you know, that's that other piece to this discussion. Um, you know, you know, what does, you know, what do your neighbors think? You know, and and how do they envision the work that you're, you know, the, you know, the work that you're doing. Um, so, so that was part of the the decision, you know, process as far as as time. Uh, and and the, and what's interesting is from community to community. S- some boards you don't see a lot of turnover, then other boards, sometimes you see a lot of turnover. Uh, because th- there's not as much interest as you'd think, you know, in the school board, what do they do? You know, that doesn't sound like it's, you know, that interesting. But those of us that have been doing this at a, for any period of time and even Iris, you know, mentioned this like. Uh, there's a lot going on. And and it has a lot of meaning uh and purpose, you know, as well and you know, and that's the big thing. You know, it affects our kids' lives, you know, at the, at the end of the day. And that's, and that's our ultimate responsibility, you know, is is, you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. The first step. Before you can even think about getting to self-actualization is safety. So if the school is not a safe place in every way. Then we shouldn't even be sitting in that room.
And for every person and for every person.
The all means all and I and I'm, when I say, when I say that, I I my um. My voice gets so even more emphatic. Because it's an expectation, it's not like, well. A few of these people, few of them, no, no, all means all, that that's why it worked. When I was teaching and coaching, you know, all of my kids. Got treated the same way and that's why we all did so well. And it didn't matter what their skill level was. They all did well. Because they were all treated the same way, with the same level of respect and with the same expectation. You know, you will do the best you can. So anyways, uh, so that's some of the, you know, the backstory, I guess.
All right, well, thank you for that and thank you all of you for, you know. Putting it out there for everybody, like, you know, that's really the reason for this panel and we're running a little bit late, but I did wanna get this last piece in and. Correlate it back to your origin stories and then this idea of power and things like that, that Amanda had brought up. And that's, why should people run for school board, right? Because. Uh, there's an amount of power in the these position and I think that a lot of people don't think that they can do that. And a lot of people don't think that it's accessible for them. Um, and it might not be in some cases, but why should people do that? Um, anybody, uh, let's just get a couple of answers before we go, I mean, it's probably another hour-long conversation, but. Some bullet points on why people should do that. Anybody jump in? It's a big question.
You know, I think, you know, the. It's actually simple. You know, everybody has something to share. And it's important to get as many different views as possible. But if you've got a certain interest or expertise that could be helpful. Then it's almost. Uh. More important that you share that. You know, if if you were a nurse or you had an interest in sports or you had an interest in. You know, any particular topic, that might be your jumping off point and then you'll grow into the other things. You know, but I I think that initial uh attraction might be something that you might not expect. But it is okay.
And this.
We need it.
Right, and and you can bring that perspective in a school board setting and set policies, set. Budgets, do things that would therefore take some power back, right? In your community, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Amanda, I would love to hear you speak more to this.
I would, I would say that. Did I think about the students, right? I think the work that we do, it's about, we are creating a system for our future, I always think of like. What, you know, it's not just for our kids that are in the school right now, but like, we're like thinking long term, like. Here's our future and whatever decisions you make, um, it's going to affect. All of our students in our district, so I think that. Um, I think a school board is like very specific. Um, in terms of the change that you can make to the lives of. The the students right now and and the children, but that also can, you know, grow, so I think, I think it. I I I think we need people that are here to have conversations, maybe different views. But that really believe in that our students center and that in their heart, whatever it is, the politics don't get in the way. Of understanding the impact that we can make in the lives of the students right now and for the future students that come before us. So I think it's uh, I I don't care what your politics are, but if. Your politics interfere with the needs that students have. Into they and tomorrow and the, the beautiful programs and the transformation that we can make in our, in our education system for them. Then you should not run for school board if your politics come before the students. If you are a student center and you believe that we can transform our education system. For to better the lives of the current students right now, then you, we need you and you should be in every. Ballot that is there, we need people that believe in students and that believe. That they have the power to make the change and the things that we need for the future, so.
Ooh, I love that, Amanda, yes.
But well, Mia, you know, you said it yourself. You, after Iris got done talking, you said. Ah, I feel safe. Because she's the future.
Right.
Okay, and and we see that all the time when we have students come in doing presentations, doing. You know, sitting on the boards, being involved, listening to their discussions and you go. Okay, we're 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 doing okay, but but we can always step it up a notch, you know. For for them and for us, because I remember when, you know, students say, why do you guys work so hard? And I said, because. We gotta take care of you because you're gonna take care of us. And if we don't, and if we don't do a good job with you, then shame on us.
Yes, that's right, thank you. So just before we close out, I just wanna give our each of you an opportunity to tell us of any work, resources, events. Or anything that you wanna mention, uh, let you, let us know, tell us here. If you have any links, we'll put it in on our live um feed, which will be distributed later. Uh, and watched later, I hope, so go for it, Iris, is anything going on over there in Essex? I think there is. What's going on, anything?
I mean, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot going on in Essex, um, specific to the school board, I mean, I would just. Um, ask that people attend our meetings if if they are watching this and have the capacity because. We we are doing important work and we're doing um, really, really big work right now, so. I think that's a good step people can take, I also in in the coming, coming year and in this coming time, there are gonna be cut some. School board seats that are coming up, um, and I I would encourage people to run and and or um. Just if they can get onto the school board because I think that. Um, we we could use some more voices um that are looking to better our future, so. Um, I think that's a really important next step for for anyone who is even at all inclined, because it, because it isn't as hard as. People might think and it and it isn't as hard to get on the school board and it isn't as hard um doing the work, because it it'll, it'll come. Um, when you, if you sit in enough meetings, you'll, you will, you'll get to understand it and figure out um what your space is. Um, and so, I mean, I'm not sure.
You know, that's good advice, go to the meetings, then you'll be inspired to maybe run, that's like step one, see how it works, see how it goes. I love that, thank you, Iris. Elizabeth, anything going on over there in your community that you'd like to put out?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say tito on that, Iris, that uh. If you're thinking about running for school board, don't even think about it if you haven't attended a meeting. You really need to watch a meeting and see what it's all about and see if you, if if it fits you. Um, because uh it's great work, it's it's seen, you know, some of it sounds like it's really boring, some of it is boring, but. But all of it is important and uh. Uh, it it is actually all meaningful and it is, we, even when we argue, we ha- we are collegial, actually. At least on our board, I should say, um, not all boards are like that, uh, but um. Uh, it's not, it's not necessarily a great fit for everybody. Um, and so, do, do.
Have any actions, anything going on over in your district happening? Highlight?
I can't, we don't have any actual actions um that would, no, we don't.
Okay, great, coach, coach.
Um, I I I think. Everything that everyone has said so far, you know, Iris's points and Elizabeth's points around. Uh, the experience. You know, part of that experience is coming and seeing. Because you might see something that fires you up and you go, okay. You know, I can work on this one, you know, or you'll see something and you go, wow, that's pretty interesting. Maybe I'll come to the next meeting and see what's going on and 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 we've had people who've come to meetings and and you'll see their name pop up. And you go, huh, interesting, and then you'll see them five, six, seven times and you go. Uh, okay, I think this is somebody either that is really serious or is writing a book. But uh, you know, I I I think that uh it it's all well, well said. Um, I'm really proud of the work that, you know, our team, you know, uh, you know, has done. And continues to do, uh, and. It's all about progress. Not perfection. You know, and and that, you know, that's what it's about, that's what gets us up in the morning, that's what keeps us going. Um, and you know, I mean, even even little things, I was just looking at our webpage and. There were, we put in the uh race and equity uh link within our page. Uh, and at first, it only showed up, you know, like on the board's page and I've gone, that's not helpful. You know, who goes to the board page? You know, it should be at every school's page, it should be at every, you know. Anytime you enter the district site, you should be able to see that page and when you get to that page. It is outstanding, you know, the team that worked on that and put that together, you know, rocks. And then the work that they show and the links that are there for folks that are looking at moving the process forward. We're a policy governance district, we have executive limitations for the superintendent. And one of his executive limitations is EL ten, race and equity. We hold him accountable. To ensure that that work gets done. And then so, i- i- and if you look at the page, it's pretty clear, you know, and it is pretty. Cause that makes life a lot easier when there's not a lot of questions. But but anyways, I.
I know that was a journey to get to that point and I and I appreciate your service to get us there. Amanda, can you close us out with with what you've got going on over, over there in?
Yeah, we're in an exciting process, we just started a um community listen, listening session, period. And that I hope that continues through the year and through the years and uh. To to become a norm, so if people in our monthly or Roxbury are listening, you can request a listening session with the school board members. We're gonna be setting up shop in Farmer's Market, you can have coffee with us, you can, we're gonna have different. Um, uh, focus groups that are affinity based, uh, so. Yeah, so that's gonna be happening in the next few months so that we can gather information and also to just. Yeah, for people to know that we're here and that we are listening and that. Um, we, we want to be part of the whole. Things that are happening in the school, you're right, like we want to make sure that uh caregivers know that we are here with them. Um, and that we're not just some. Some board that meets twice a month, very tired.
That accessibility piece, that is so amazing, community needs to be able to be, have access to you. And and know what's going on in their schools and that's, that's, that's how we. That's how we push conversation. Again, you all, thank you so much for joining us and thank you to the public who watched us, we went a little bit longer than we were supposed to do. Because I just didn't wanna stop the conversation, we could still have more of them and I hope that people continue having conversations outside of this realm. This has been an amazing and eye-opening discussion, so soon look out for resources from Rights and Democracy. Uh, for ways that you can engage in your local school board communities, also of course, check with our guests here. And and as they have stated in their different ways and how you can um participate locally. And as always, you can follow Rights and Democracy Institute on. And as always, you can follow Rights and Democracy Institute on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and be sure to join us again in November for our next traverse. Thank you all, thanks again.
Thank you.